Good evening, good evening. Welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville to be held on June 18th. And the time is 7:01 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Perry Moore.
Present.
Mayor Proten Puyana Vargas.
Present.
Councilmember Richard Otto.
Present.
Councilmember Sonia Edmond.
Present.
Councilmember Brandon DeVine.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Redd.
Present.
Councilmember Roland Segovia.
Here.
And Councilmember Divina Ruffin.
We have a call, so let us stand for our invocation as we introduce the page of allegiance. Ms. Brownstone, can you do us the honor, please?
Dear heavenly Father, once again, we come before you, Protagonist, and thank you for another day of life, for another opportunity for the council to meet in the Lord's will, take care of business for the city, Lord, for its citizens, and pray, Lord, for your blessings upon their lives, upon their hearts and minds. Yet tonight, Lord, as they have also a selection and decision to make, I pray that, Lord, that will be done for the city of Pierceville, that they may continue to be blessed and prosper. Lord, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, before we get started, just want to remind the council of the rule of courtesy are in place. When you want to speak, raise your hand. When one person is speaking, please wait for them to finish before you ask to be noticed. And then wait for their announcements before you start to speak. Alrighty, now, old business. This is for a discussion of class action to award general contractors bid for the City of Pierceville annex building project funded through the TML insurance claim. It's a previously tabled item, so we need to untable, please. Entail a motion to untable.
Motion to untable.
May I have a second?
Second.
I'm in favor. Motion carries. Alrighty. First of all, before we get into the discussion, well, it's still the discussion. I have a few words to say to everyone, especially to the council. I just want to remind the council who were involved in the planning of Phase One, Phase Two, that you should be proud of the project that was presented to TML, as well as the product part. Every day, I get senior citizens, as well as children, thanking us for bringing that part to the community. You don't have anything to be sad about because of accusations. You have nothing to be sad about. You haven't done anything wrong. The project was presented. It was presented to TML. Monies were received. You voted. And we've done everything by the book. You have no control if people don't have concept of depreciation. So if they don't have concept of depreciation, so be it. You still haven't done anything wrong. Don't become discombobulated by what you read on Facebook, because you know in your hearts, again, you haven't done anything wrong. We have nothing to hide. So, I would invite anyone, if it's be the FBI, the Texas Ranger, the district attorney, the attorney general, or any other law enforcement to investigate, so be it. Because, again, we haven't done anything wrong. After Josie present her, this is later, after you present your detailed presentation on the monies, how they were distributed, then if there going to be a forensic audit, let it be. Let it be. And then we will post the audit, so the community can see. Lastly, I would like to say, we have a vital project that's pending. And I don't think that project should be held up by unverified accusations. Because TML will only release the monies when we move forward with the project that they agreed upon. So now, we can move on to discussion on this previously tabled item. Do you have questions for?
Are we just looking at the building?
Yes, the building.
Okay.
Yes, because you want part of the park, so we're just talking about the building.
So, Mayor, council, as I previously stated, one of the previous meetings I was at, on May 16th, we opened bids for the city hall annex. We received three bids. The low bid was from Wealth Construction out of Pleasanton. They came in with a base bid of $949,117. We had followed references. They had glowing references. So our recommendation is that the council award the project to Wealth Construction out of Pleasanton in that amount, $949,117. Not sure if everybody was aware of the layout of the building that's listed on, but I left the whole plan with everybody. I know the last time, there was some issues. There was some confusion about how the money was spent at the park versus the building, but these are two separate issues.
Exactly.
If there's any questions as far as the building concerned, I'm here to answer them. As far as the park concerns, you know, we were involved with that project. One of the recommendations I might go to make, Mayor, is if there are some concerns as far as TML and the building, would that be something that you can have your city attorney look into and see if there's any?
TML doesn't have a concern.
Well, not TML, but if there's any concern from council or anybody else.
We can also ask TML if they will come down. Is that the council, or having the avenue issue that is a concern to be here and discuss? Answer your question, council, as well. If they will come down, they've done it a lot of times.
Yeah, I think that would be very wise, exactly with funds.
Well, yeah, we could have them come down, but it doesn't stop the project from moving on. Because, as they said, they won't release the monies until we start the project, so I don't understand why it's been held up. Because regardless of what you find, they still going to release the money, because they approved it. They approved the plan that we presented to them.
Mayor.
Yes.
The concern that I have is the, let's not talk about the park. The park is another issue, okay? And I agree with you. And I'm hoping that you can stand by your word on the forensic audit that I've been asking for. That will solve a lot of problems. And we'll see who's right and who's wrong. And if I'm wrong, guess what? I'll be the first one to admit. But believe me, because of open record requests that I've done, I know what I'm looking at. That's the only one. So I hope you stand by your word that you will support the forensic audit, even though you had a vote on the other side. Now, on this annex building, the reason that I had a big concern is because I requested, once again, the proposals that this council voted on, okay? Mayor, you're not from here. You're not from Pierceville, okay?
I know.
Oh, I'm just telling you. Okay? So you don't know the history of that neighborhood center. I know the history of that neighborhood center. I grew up two blocks away from that neighborhood center. I went to school there. I worked there, okay? I went for my legal aid, my work studies. There was some, I went through all those programs, okay? As far as I can remember, on the research that I've done, according to the proposals that was submitted by this council, by this council to TML, it is false accusations, allegations of the proposal. Nowhere was I able to find, okay, a city hall ever existed at the neighborhood center. Nowhere. The last time at city hall that I can, I backtracked, was in 1974 at Oak Street. Okay, so nowhere prior to that time was, after that time, was a city hall at the neighborhood center. The Wheels on Wheels, okay, had lost funding from the Community Council South Central Texas up to 10 years ago. Okay, so nowhere was Wheels on Wheels at the neighborhood center 10 years after that, okay? TMC and Texas Martin Council, before this council, they came. This council, four years before that, they gave up some land on Freehold Street. The president located that right now. So there was nowhere to be found at the neighborhood center when that center burned down, okay? The legal aid, social services for people, the needy people in Pierceville, those people had lost their funding many years ago. Many years ago. So they were not in existence in that facility anymore. But according to the proposal that I am affirming, that was submitted to TML, okay, all of these are misleading information to TML. And this is the second part of the money. That money really is not ours. The $1.3 million, okay, for the park, the one that we already received and exhausted, yes, I agree, that one belonged to us, and whatever happened to it, whatever, however we dispersed, that's another issue, right? But yes, that belonged to us. This $1.1 million is not our money. We're asking for that money, okay? And if we read the proposal, Mayor, it's in a proposal, okay? These are not words that are coming out of my mouth. This is a proposal. It says that TML, okay, will not release the money till the project is complete, okay? Now, after I submit my report to TML, because I've submitted a lot of reports to TML and send it to review right now, okay? And that's why the recommendation that Bobby made is awesome. If they were to come down, okay, and present, present it to us and say, you know what? Say something to find us up at that, it's funny. Once again, I'll be the first one to admit that, hey, it's wrong. I misjudged it. I was wrong, okay? But because of the history that I know on that neighborhood center, okay, I know that I'm wrong. I grew up there. I worked there, okay? I know the project, okay? And the proposal that was presented to TML on behalf of the city of Pierceville, the second phase of the proposal is nowhere, nowhere true to the proposal. It's totally misleading.
Yes.
I contradict some of what you're saying, that the money does not belong to the city. However, what the first, the first phase, what they paid was the actual cash value of what the building was worth. So the second half is actually the replacement cost of the building. So that is entitled to the city, providing that we build something similar, similar or alike to something to that effect. So that's why we're trying to vote on this today, in order to retrieve the replacement cost. Now, if we do not build, we will not receive the replacement cost. The only funds that we receive is the actual cash value, what we thus far has received, and that's it. So you're saying that we should do away with the replacement cost because of, I don't know. I mean, I don't understand this.
That's what he's saying.
No, I understand exactly what he's saying. But I want to clarify where that, those funds are from. And he's saying that those funds do not belong to us. Those funds actually do belong to the city, providing that we build something similar to what was out there at one point. It's the replacement cost. So you're saying that we're going to leave the replacement cost on the table because, because at one point, it was not a city hall, or at one point, it was not, it was not this? But at one point, it was, though.
It was never a city hall.
If I can clarify.
It was never a city hall, Mark, over. It was never a city hall.
But that's in regard, in regards. That's in regards. We tried to recover the replacement cost.
No, that's not the proposal that was presented to TML. The proposal was presented to TML is that this is the reason that we're asking for this money, because it was a city hall. And it was never a city hall. Right off the bat, you are not me. You know, this council is not me.
I resent the fact that you called, you were relying, because at one point, what was it not? What was, whose will was it not there at one point?
Right.
Exactly. Was it TML?
They ran it for me for the last eight years, Millman, though.
I know, but it was there at one time. They didn't say, the building had been used for several years. So at one time, it was what we said.
Mayor, when was it a city hall?
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not sure when it was a city hall.
Mayor, when was it a municipal judge?
I don't know.
Municipal court?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, the building, they're not basing, to recover the cost, it's not basing on, because that building wasn't utilized for how many years, guys? How many years?
12 years.
Yeah. So we came up with a plan to get a building that would be sufficient, and not necessarily there, we put it there to use, and that's what TML agreed upon. So that's the replacement cost we're trying to retrieve.
Because.
Because we could have just left the monies, we could have left it on the table, because they were, initially, it's just going to give us the 1.0, how much? 2 million? Yeah, that's what they're going to give us initially.
1.3.
1.3, whatever.
Okay, Mayor. So you're telling me that it's okay that the proposal?
I'm not telling you anything. I'm just telling you how, what, what we are trying to move forward.
This was approved by you, by the council.
By the council.
Yes.
Yes.
And the proposal says that you know for a fact that there was a city hall?
No, it doesn't say we know for a fact, because it depends on the report that was given to us.
Why is this, is this?
It was depend on.
Why is this there around city hall?
Because that's what we agreed upon, to build a new city hall.
Because that's what, you understand, it was over there? It was never a city hall.
No, 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 no.
Council, I can, because we had discussions.
Go ahead.
It wasn't because that city hall was over there.
No.
It morphed into that. We had discussions. It was initially just going to be an office area and move some people over, and then we talked about bigger area and everything. So my question, if I could, is the building was insured, right?
Yes.
For?
2.?
2.4. So 2.4 million. So that money should be used towards the building, right? And I guess the proposal was really not about the building, because we know that the insurance money has to go towards the building. Actually, the proposal was what you're going to do with above the 1.3, the other money. So it's really about the focus should be on the park and the money going there. And the building is actually what was insured. The building insured, you're building another building with that insurance money. And that's all we're doing. Now, all the extras that took place above and beyond the building is something out of the scope of actually just the replacement of a facility. Whatever it was being used for, I mean, if it ever was used for city hall, whatever it was used for, all you're doing is, it was insured, and you're replacing that building. And you're doing, you're just providing a facility over here.
Let me ask you a question over there. How long will that project get off the ground and get completed?
How long?
Five months.
Oh, no. By the time we award it, it'll start construction, maybe a couple of months, and it's going to take about eight months.
Eight months. The reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is because, you know, y'all can vote for whatever y'all want. You know, I know the way, what I'm doing, and you know, I know what I found, okay? So y'all, the only concern is that I want to go on record, and I'm glad that they're recording. I want to go on record that when TML does their investigation, okay? Does a full investigation and gets the full facts, okay? I want you to understand that they're going to request for us to pay back the 1.1 million dollars. Not the 1.3, the 1.1.
For the building or for the park?
For the, for the, it's fine, Mayor. I mean, that's, that's it.
Because they don't want to agree on that.
You can't even ask me if there was a city hall over there. You can't even ask me that question.
Yes, Divina.
Okay. So I know you said earlier in your opening statement that, you know, you don't know for whatever reason why we are prolonging this and not doing this. I'm going to go on record myself and just say, it's not that, I don't want the building. We need the building, like I said before. I'm upset that it was taken out from the West Side. We have neglected the West Side for many, many years. When I said to the council before, we were doing incentives and giving out statements for them to fix our homes, because we neglect that side. And it's very, very clear. The other thing I want to say is, I know TML approved funding. TML approved the funding that was submitted to them. Most of that funding didn't happen the way we said it was going to happen. Even though it wasn't there previously, I'm going to say we, because we are a council, and we are here to fix things and move forward. But we, TML approved $400,000 for the park. They agreed on that amount with the council. The council agreed of $400,000 and agreed to give Mr. Jackson directive to follow the plans of the $400,000 that was approved by TML. Did that occur? No, it didn't. And that is why I am having to agree with Mr. Segovia today, is that I wanted that internal investigation, whether we call it forensic, or whatever we call it. I call it an audit, of how the money was spent, and how come we did not follow the plan according to what TML approved, and as well as what the council approved, and what gave Mr. Jackson the right to not come before council and say, I'm over budget of $165,000, and I need to spend this money? He did not do that. And we still have incomplete restrooms. We have a crap walking trail. We have a messed up parking lot. We have lighting that has not been corrected. We've added lighting. But there is toys or equipment that is not, is broken, not usable. We have our cardio area not up to par. And that is my concern. I'm not, I want to know why we went and allowed for us to go against what TML approved of the $400,000. TML is agreed to whatever money y'all agreed, and if y'all want to build a city hall, let's build it. But we did not follow what TML approved. Prove me wrong, and let's fix it, and we go forward. We overspent $165,000, and no one to this day has showed me where we spent it. That's for the record.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Any other comments?
No, ma'am. As far as the project, the first phase, which was the park, I mean, we did approve, I think it was $157,000 or something like that, pretty close to that, for that. It was a roundabout figure. It wasn't like, this is what we're going to do exactly with the money. I'm not defending the project. I'm not defending anything. All I'm saying is, you know, when some of you sit up and say, we're lying to somebody. We're not lying to anybody.
I'm not saying that.
What we have done is we've tried to get creative with this whole situation. The building is what burned down. The park did not burn down. Yet we were allowed to spend lots of money on the park. And maybe things didn't completely turn out the way we wanted to, but we've got to work together, get it fixed, get it finished, whatever has to be done. You know, the fact is that we were allowed by TML to veer off in a different direction, so to speak, and get some things done for the community. You know, that's not a lot of money. $2.3 million is not a lot of money. But the fact that we got the park renovated, you know, the media came here with a $75,000 proposal for the last year's budget. That was not going to get us hardly even, and we had to cut that even, because we didn't have money. We got, we got that renovated, and, yeah, we still got to finish it up. We've got, we've got the, we were able to purchase storage, storage, which was what that building really was. The white building, it used to be the old school, the old West Side school, was just storage. That's what it was. So we have storage. We got storage, and we got a lot here to build, another building. Now, the needs at the time, you know, y'all mentioned several programs that existed out of there, were working out of there, and they did for a while. And those were the needs at the time. But the needs of council, as we saw it a couple of years ago, is that we've got to find another place for our yard to eventually move into, okay? And that's why we purchased the old nursing home out there that's been standing up. It seemed like a nice, a good area for us to secure our equipment and so forth. We got the park renovated, and we also were able to get things done, moving towards an annex building, which would serve the current purposes of the city and its workers in the community. Now, we do not have Wheels on Wheels. I don't know how that program turned out.
The county has it.
The county has it now.
And have it built once a week, once a week, like every Friday, week in.
Well, that's because the funds were cut.
And that's something that, you know, this council can start looking at as well, because we've always talked, we've always talked about doing more for our elders. We just have to come together to do those kinds of things. And I realize, I mean, you know, things didn't go the way we wanted them 100% of the time, but in general, TML has been very gracious in allowing this city to be a little creative and do a little bit more with the money. And that's what we're trying to do, because we just didn't have, we had, we had a lot of debt. We have a lot of debt service, and we didn't have any run balance, and we just didn't have the money. So we have to stay our, how to think outside the box a little bit, and be able to afford some salaries as well, and the insurance and so forth. All of that costs a lot of money. We're trying to be competitive as well with the county and the other cities, as far as our employees is concerned too, because we've got to retain some of our employees and some of them we've lost along the way. And that's our goal now, I believe, is to bring employees back and get services, get services going as fast as possible. I mean, I.
And I think that was the 165 add-on we did with the building and the land. That's the difference. That's why.
And I just, my thing is this, I just wanted to know, you know, it's not, I know, if it was $456,000, that's fine, but I know they give us a little lead weight, but it's going to equal still over $100,000. I'm just curious.
Well, yeah, that's, and it was brought to the council for us to vote on the building, as well as the land, that's, that's.
No, and I know that was voted on. I'm, what I'm here for, I'm here to pretend tax dollars. I'm here to see where monies is being spent. I've been here before. I've been through more than what most of y'all have been through in a long period of time, what I went through in four years, good and bad. But my thing is that we want to account for that. And I know it's a good thing, but park's a good thing for the community. Nobody's saying that. But it's just that it was over spending. I did, we did research to see if there was any open request for the approval of more monies to be spent, and we didn't find any. So even if TML approved this amount, that's the amount we spent. You know, TML has not come in, sometimes they don't need to. And sometimes if the council agrees to do it, then we do it. And TML will come back and audit the spending of the monies. But right now, that is just a major concern to us. Yes, people are grateful for the park, but people also have concerns. But it's going to go like that in anything that we do. We're going to have people like us and dislike us at times. But we're talking about $100,000 that wasn't approved. And I'm saying who did the job and who shouldn't have done the job. If we want to know where it went wrong, nobody questioned it until we came. Nobody questioned it until we came. Nobody cared, not, I shouldn't not say that, I'm sorry. Nobody had interest to check to see why we were over $100,000 because we, we. No, and this is what y'all feel, which is fine, that, okay, well, we got the park up and running. If it went over $160,000, no problem. I have a problem with that. It doesn't mean y'all have to, nobody looked into it until we got here. And I'm not saying anything else, other than we agreed three meetings back, it was voted on, that an internal investigation was going to happen, and it's not happened. And it was supposed to be based on agenda to see who was going to get the audit. That audit is already been approved through, it was a 3-2 vote that took place, okay? We just got to do whatever motion's on the table, we got to do it. If it costs us money, blame it on us, you know? If it doesn't, and we find out there's a, there was a crack in this deal, Mr. City Manager did it, Mr. Moe did it, let's fix it. He was bonded. It could be an insurance problem.
Yes.
It could be an insurance problem, but a bonded improvement.
And, and you're right on, on some of those points. You know, we don't know some things, but we need to find out, that's true. However, you know, when you say that no one cared to look into it, we did ask.
I, I never said that. I just said the interest wasn't there that I feel.
Well, we, we, we did have the interest and, and, uh, so I can tell you, we, we did ask and, and it was pretty much explained, well, these were some of the extras that we were asking to be put at that park and that's what. But, you know, as, as we discussed last time, I, I think, uh, we're gonna give you an opportunity to bring all that information before the council.
Yes, I have my department already pulling out all the records, everything that y'all requested. So we can go then and do some sort of workshop to delay everything out, allow y'all to look at everything from the beginning to the end and where all the expenditures were expended in our efforts to go out, plot the piece and all that. Um, so my department's already working on it.
So maybe by another week, by Tuesday?
And we can identify a workshop strictly for that for all these questions we're concerned.
We could just get the paper, you know, we all get it from the council. We can review it at home. We can review it, we can come in here to the office. The special meetings is just out of hand for me. I have a family of six and I must say my son's all-star game and name, but I have an obligation to the community to be here and this is where I'm at today. But if, if we give you the papers, you don't want me taking them home, I don't care. I can come and prove them here daily, hourly, my lunch break, I can do that. But the special meetings is out of control right now. So, um-
Yes, Robert.
So, so can we agree that this building here is a replacement for the facilities that was there? And it, it is within the insured amount? Let's say the one point three, which is less than insured amount. The one point three that we have available besides the other funds that we used for the park. This project is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which is within that one point three million. So we're, we're well within the dollar amount that was allocated for the replacement of the building. So I think those are two separate issues. You know, there is still an issue with the park and T M L and extra money was spent and that's, that's a totally separate issue than the building and the facility itself. And moving forward with that, I think.
I did have a question on this, on this project. As engineer, do you foresee any, uh, how, how close to the actual bid do you feel this project can change? Do you see change orders coming up?
There shouldn't be any change orders.
Can you put it in writing?
Put that in writing.
Can you put it in writing?
He'll take it out of your bag.
There shouldn't be any change orders. If you stay with it five percent, can you quickly, you have to say?
There's always a, anywhere between five and ten percent.
He said nothing.
No. Well, we, on a perfect project, there isn't a change order.
But we don't, here at Pierceville, there's no perfect projects.
There's never a perfect project.
But hold on, but hold on here. It goes two ways, that goes two ways also because there's also there's that little bit of a leeway in there between the one point three and the nine four nine. And council might come back and say, "Well, uh, let's go with a better bit somewhere or another." So then we would go back.
Because another thing, we, we don't have the furniture budget either.
No, but you have, what, what?
No, I understand, I understand, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we've been over before. That's where we need everything down and ready to go. Because we have bathrooms that are not being done. We have one restroom working at that park, one, okay?
We, we, the, the P D and, and, uh, we were pretty much on budget. And we had some faults where, where we had, I, I understand. Remember when, when the electric took, uh, totally changed everything when they had to, and there was a change order for like forty thousand dollars. It was unforeseen funds that, 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 that couldn't have served.
That's where you gotta make sure the, the numbers are accurate and we're close and we have monies set aside on reserves for stuff like that.
If you want a big construction, we, we can make sure we, we go over this and make sure-
But we don't have that right now. We don't have that right now. That's the question we're asking, do we have that?
So when we're gonna tell, get to T M L, "Hey, T M L, this is a bid. There might be some things that come up during construction. The budget is one point three, it's nine hundred and forty-nine." They're not, our, our recommendation to them, and they're gonna keep it anyways, "Hey, don't allocate that money somewhere else." Or, "We're only asking for nine hundred and forty-nine, no. If there's any changes, we can increase it up to the one point three." Does that make sense? I mean, if it's, so if there is any changes for any reason, it's gonna be covered under that one point three.
But how can you increase it to one point three when the interim city manager said that we were over budget over here? Yeah, remember we were over budget over here? So we were gonna use this money that y'all were under budget to try to cover that budget, remember? Remember you said that? So how?
Cause you can't do that.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
That, that to me is something that, what were y'all over budget?
Uh, we still needed the restrooms, which they're talking about, um, about thirty, thirty thousand to go in.
So we can't touch that.
And a few other items like the, to do the parking lot, the parking lot.
It's the whole playground equipment.
For one dollar amount, we're talking about.
So, but the-
But Bobby, what she, one second, one second, one second, one second.
Can we do that, what she's talking about?
Yes, because it's the whole project A and B.
It falls together.
It falls together, dear. It falls together. Yes.
I just wanna hear what Bobby's talking about.
So what I was gonna say is this, we're at nine hundred and forty-nine, even with the overruns at the park. Two hundred, you'd say? And you have one point three or one point two, you're telling me?
One point.
One point three. So even if you take two hundred off, it's one point one and it were nine forty-nine.
And furniture?
So that furniture, that's, I mean, we can come up with an estimate for that. How many, do they, do they pay for the furniture for, to come?
Is it one point three or is it one point one?
One point three, one.
The big difference.
One point three with the park.
With the park.
No, with the park. That's the money that's already been exhausted.
So, because we can't agree on something when we don't have nothing down. We don't have-
So, but you're, you're, you're muddying the issue by bringing the parts into the building.
Can we do that?
Well, whether we can or we can't, you still, would you, are you gonna give up the one point one million dollars that you have available for the building?
Yeah, but I, I ask Bobby-
Because you might be over, because you might be over a hundred thousand dollars park. If there was something unfortunate that happened at the park where you have to for some reason or another, pay back that money, you're looking at only paying that a hundred thousand dollars and not foregoing on one point one million dollars. Some unfortunate circumstance that might have happened.
But is, I mean, on every project, there's usually a five to ten percent contingency, right?
Five percent?
Five percent?
Ten percent is a bad, a bad word.
Yeah, ten percent, if you have ten percent, then you're, nine thousand, you're way off.
So five percent?
Five percent. Forty-five thousand dollars.
And, and, and this, this bid here was, uh,
Nine forty, nine-
Pretty accurate in, in terms of what you all feel will cost to get this thing.
If everything that was included in that?
Yes, sir.
One other thing, I, I don't think T M L has told us that we have to allocate this amount for the building or this amount for the park. They haven't told us that. They told us in order for us to recover the, 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 the actual cash value and the replacement cost, we would have to build another building for almost similar to it. It doesn't matter how much it would cost, just as long as it doesn't overrun what is the amount, okay? And, and, and they approved us to do the park. So the park is not, the, the park is an issue, yes. I, I totally agree with that. I don't agree with some, some of the things I was done. Um, but that, that's a different story. I don't wanna lose the one point, what is it, one point one? Because we're disputing something that, that can be taken care of in, here in the near future. Which, we're, we're giving you ample opportunity for you to come up with those figures. Uh, and if there's discrepancies, yes, I would love to do the, the audit. Because that is what is right and that's what is, how, how we become, we continue to be transparent.
And when we agreed on the audit, it was a three-two vote. All we did not motion for was the name of the company that was gonna do the audit. The thing is, I've asked Bobby, what we're planning on doing is moving monies from the park to the city hall. Is that lawful?
And, and the answer is, the entire T M L claim was processed through the city manager's office and T M L. So my office was not asked to assist in processing.
So they did it with all attorney advice?
So, so I think my best answer, my best answer to the question is that, since I haven't seen paperwork that went back and forth between T M L, I can't answer that question specifically without contacting T M L or looking at paperwork. I'll be happy to do it, obviously, but I can't answer the question.
Now, now the internal audit, you, you realize that that is gonna be a line item, correct? So what I was suggesting is for us to verify first, if there's any discrepancies, then yes, we would definitely have to go out.
And I understand that, but there's a motion been made already. There's a motion, if y'all, if y'all want us not to follow motion, let's do it. But there was a motion made three meetings, two meetings ago and it was a three-two vote?
And then, then we asked, did we ask that, that the city hall be given the opportunity to do that there?
Yeah, that was the second meeting, but still that motion was on the table. You can't override that motion. But we made another motion to give them more time. But that other motion's on the table, it wasn't the same motion.
The minutes, we have the minutes, I don't, I don't remember the-
So, so do we feel, so do we feel like the building is within the insurance proceeds? And, and that's totally different than if there was some issue in my, in the current business, by overruns?
Yes. Yes, you. Being of the questions for Alan, we, we need to contain them.
One last question. Who, who will oversee the project?
Rick will be here overseeing the construction and then architect Craig Forsyth.
We're gonna have a tamper here.
Craig Forsyth?
Craig, our architect, he's been here several times. He'll be doing weekly decisions.
And who at the city will be alongside that?
That'd be great, you could appoint somebody.
I can show him the plans and talk to him what, uh, we're looking for. We don't, we don't have a hundred percent coverage here, but totally, I can see what they're gonna be doing, you know, the next day or whatever, when I'm not here. So they can make sure they look at it and I can run through the-
But, but that's a great idea. So if Rick's not here, that the person from the city is supposed to make surprise inspection at any time? Just go see what they're doing?
Will we get a replacement for, if he's not gonna be here?
Well, our budget does not allow us to be here forty hours a week.
Well, but he's just saying that when you're not here or-
Oh, when I'm not here, yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a representative.
But I, I do think it's a good idea if there's a representative from the city that y'all appoint, maybe to make inspections a bit more often and also just surprise visits more than anything, I guess it is. Sorry about that. Counselor?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir. No further discussion. Maybe you can obtain a motion to address for a, please.
Mayor, I wanna make a motion that we deny the awarding of the general contractor bid for the city of Pierceville, uh, annex building, uh, project uh, through the T M L insurance claim. That's my motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Motion failed.
I'd like to. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and award the general contract bid to the, the city of Pierceville annex building funded by T M L insurance claim to, uh-
There's a motion on the table, may I have a second?
Second.
On favor by shoe of hands. Order three, motion carries, you may, four to three. Four, four. All right, four to three. Item five, new business, discuss and consider to approve city attorneys, uh, country, uh, city attorneys contract. This is an actual item, action item. We entertain a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second? Second. All in favor? I'm sure we can. But first of all, I asked Bobby to, um, if he would accept a contract for two years from the city of Pierceville because it's only fair that we offered him a contract. Two previous city attorneys had a contract with the city. And so, since he's been here this past two years, he's been sure an asset to our, to our, to the city of Pierceville. First of all, he's well versed in municipal law. And, um, I would say ninety-nine percent of the lawsuits that we entered, we didn't have to outsource, uh, for other attorneys. We saved the city a lot of money. And, um, I'm, I'm very happy to, I've learned a lot since Bobby been in the office about municipal law. And, um, so he agreed. He agreed to accept the, the contract because normally he just, he was here based on the majority of the council. So I feel it's fair to offer him a contract at first. So when, after he agreed, he sent me a contract and I was very surprised when I reviewed his contract because he had actually reduced his services, his fee services. Instead of a hundred thousand dollars a year, he's now asking for, um, eighty-five thousand dollars a year, fifteen percent decrease. And also for any litigation services, he de, he decreased, um, his fee from two hundred dollars an hour to one fifty an hour, which will save the city of Pierceville significantly in the event of a lawsuit. Um, so Bobby, I need you to kinda enlighten, um, the new council and remind the, the old council, um, current council of your past performances as being hired here with the city of Pierceville, please.
Mayor, first of all, thank you for the kind words. As you mentioned, uh, I've developed an contract with the city. In fact, uh, we represent six cities and five houses in Oregon and I don't have a contract with any of them. And the reason why is I don't ask for one. And if my clients insist upon one, I always ask them to think about it because I don't require it. And the reason, ethically, we just feel that we serve at the pleasure of a governing body. And should that change, we understand. So that's why we don't have contracts. But you asked me for one. Uh, I certainly honor that request. But in doing so, I did it to try to stay consistent with what we've always done, which is to continue to serve at the pleasure of the council. You'll notice what I inserted in there was even though I was, it was requested of us to put it through your term, I put in there that we still continue, if you're interested, to serve at the pleasure of the council and can be terminated at any time, subject to council vote. I feel strongly about that because ethically, separately, you shouldn't have somebody here if the majority of the council doesn't want them here. And that's just the way it should be. Second is, as you know, the amount that you paid your city attorney has grown over the years. I was first fortunate enough to be able to work for you in the year two thousand. And, um, and Mr. Segovia was instrumental in bringing me here and I, I appreciate him for that. I was able to work here again a few years back. Again, uh, Mr. Segovia was instrumental in bringing me here again and I appreciate that because we've always had a good working relationship. But the amount that you've paid your city attorney on retainer has gradually over the years grown to a hundred thousand. And I know that's what was paid to the previous city attorney and the one before that. And I was just open to the suggestion that reduce it. And I put in fifteen percent to reduce it to one hundred eighty-five. We're open to any suggestions, uh, because we work to the letter. But on the litigation side, we hope that we don't get sued. We hope at all times that whatever advice we give you prevents us from doing so. And I'd like to think for the most part, we haven't gotten sued as a result of things that the council has done, a decision the council made. And we know that the chief is here. They've seized a couple of vehicles over the years. We've been sued because of that and the city was allowed to sue those vehicles. So there are certain things that still happen at the staff level. Uh, we get sued from time to time and we have to defend the city and we do, we do so, you know, that's our glory. Uh, and I know what was brought up at one point was the Tobias matter. We weren't the first lawyers to represent the city in that case. We weren't the second. We were actually the third. That defensive lawsuit occurred over a period of years. And I know this council, by the time it finally got to this council and your predecessor, the demand for settlement had exceeded two hundred thousand dollars. I know questions may have been asked. Why did this council not settle the case? Because eventually, the jury read the earth in favor of, of, of Mr. Tobias. Well, over the years, as the case went up on appeal twice, once before we got here, as it went to state court, to federal court, and back to state court and to the appellate courts, attorney fees continued to accrue. And various councils had input with respect to this lawsuit. And various councils had input with respect to this lawsuit, but the demands consistently were raised. The last couple of demands that we were asked to consider far exceeded two hundred thousand dollars. This council said no. Ultimately, the jury verdict was less than two hundred thousand. The amount that was paid overall, including my fees, I believe, was still less than their last demand. We were not able to settle it for the amount that they had requested. Eventually, the city wanted paying less, but on top of that, the amount was never budgeted to settle in the first place, and you had to make change, you had to make an adjustment or do something. We have handled a number of lawsuits going over the past. The only lawsuit I can remember, and I couldn't even, the only lawsuit that I can ever remember of having to ultimately pay money on is on Tobias's side. Now, granted, I'm not saying we're not going to sue, the city's going to sue, but we just hope, and we try as hard as we can to, in providing advice to you or to staff, to make it so that we don't get sued, and I think we, we provide our best possible to do so. Granted, we were not consulted, we have another suit that's still on the line, in fact, the only one left is Correa Act. That suit was, uh, was because of the seizure of the eight-liner machines. Of course, my office did not know that the seizure had occurred in the back. We were sued, there were seven claims, allegations against the city, we have successfully knocked out six of them, but the one remaining is, is alleged that the dispatch and the ordinance itself was in constitution. That was your eight-liner orders that was passed by another council many years ago, but the claim is in constitution because of lax legislative process provision for the lawsuit. But then again, we didn't draft the orders, we, of course, are tasked with defending the orders. So that's the only losses that we have been on that were handled by TML, where we had the management of our order. But then again, I'll disclose that I was asked, I didn't ask for a contract, but I was asked to present you with one, and I, I obliged, but I included language that continues to allow, we said, you can fire me anytime, we've served at your pleasure. And that was, I needed to do that, even though you asked me to put two years in there and to provide a appointment. And this council has to know that whenever we decide our time has come to move on, whether it's next week, next month, we are simply going to leave with a big thank you to you and this community, because we've been privileged and honored and respected for the past few years, and we'll continue to do so as long as we want. I'll be happy to answer any questions. You have to. I, I don't feel like we really have to defend our order, and it stands, it stands for itself. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We make mistakes, and, and I'm sure we will continue to be suffer, but we try our best also. And thank you for allowing us to be here as long as we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, I have a question. So you're saying right now we don't have no pending litigations on anything?
We're only handling one lawsuit.
And you said Correa?
Yeah, my, said Correa, and it was a lawsuit that was filed where TML, TML did not provide coverage because of the allegations that were made. It had to do with the police department seizure of eight-liner machines that had not been registered or permitted by the city in accordance with the order. So that's the only one we are handling.
Bob, we didn't lose the one from the gaming, the gaming, we didn't lose that one?
I'm not aware of any gaming lawsuit other than the one...
It's recorded in District Court, we had to, we had to pay him back some money, it's in District Court.
Not that I'm aware of.
And then we didn't, we didn't lose...
We don't handle any of the criminal aspects.
Then we didn't, we didn't lose everybody else?
Let's keep this to Bobby's track, which is on the agenda.
No, he was asking me about lawsuits.
I know, but, I know, you can ask him personally.
But we lost it.
He talked about Tobias's lawsuit.
But he did, he's explaining his performance and what he's done, but...
Did he represent everybody else well, when we had to pay him out because we fired him, because he was in contract, and we had to pay his, on his contract?
So I don't remember what the city paid, if anything, but the city did not pay out the contract on that. But yes, we were asked at the last moment, we were asked to represent the city on that, I don't know if you knew, but I'd have to look it up.
Thank you, Bobby. So, uh, we need to address an item to, um, address the agenda, five A.
Mayor, I make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, go out for RFP proposals for, uh, city attorneys' contract.
Here's a motion on the table.
Mayor, that is different.
Yeah, you can't, okay, you can't do that.
Certainly be entertained at future meetings.
Okay, that in another meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city attorney's contract as presented.
Second. All in favor, by show of hands, please. Motion carries, your turn. Okay, item six, executive session, importance with Texas government code, chapter five by one, subchapter D. Eight, review and discussion, discuss negotiated contract with appointed city manager. We need to entertain a motion to go into executive session, please. Motion, may I have a second?
Back to you.
All in favor? The tie is seven fifty-seven. All right, we need to entertain a motion to return for executive session.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Back to you.
All in favor? Motion carries, nine seventeen. Discussion considered to approve awarding the negotiated contract to the appointed city manager. The negotiation process is still, um, we're still negotiating this contract, so we're going to table this item at the time. Do we need a motion to table?
Motion to table.
May I have a second?
Back to you.
All in favor? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, all in favor? Y'all have that, thank you.